Good afternoon and welcome to the October 13th Oklahoma City Planning Commission Meeting. If you have cell phones, pagers, or other devices, we would ask you to turn them off or silence them now. If you are not the applicant and you want to address us on a case today, we have sheets like this, they're on the table outside the chambers, and if you complete one, we would be happy to hear you when we hear the case. And with that, Commissioners, we'll go to approval of the September 22nd minutes. Second? We have motion and a second to approve the minutes. Receive the minutes. Excuse me. Thank you, Pat. And they're approved. I'm actually not voting, I wasn't here last time, so I don't count as a vote. First order of business is continuances. Aubrey?
We do have two new requests for continuance. No uncontested requests this time. Two new requests, item B-11 on your agenda for case CE 940 to defer to December 8th, and item B-12 for case SPUD 917, also to defer to December 8th.
And I would like to continue item 8.
Why are we continuing?
We didn't have the amenities letter in when it was due last week.
Commissioner, I will say that this is the fourth plat I've turned in for this subdivision, and it's the same amenity letter each time, so I thought we had that covered while we'd already turned in.
Is that correct?
We turned in Skyline 1, 2, this is 3, and also turned in the springs at Skyline Trails. They all have the same letter, the same Skyline amenities letter.
If it addresses the same amenities?
Yes.
Okay. At the same location?
Yes.
Okay, you're off the hook. Okay, so it was items 11 and 12. Anyone here today to address us on those two items on our agenda? Take a motion?
I'll move. I'll move that we continue items 11 and 12.
And we have a second. Cast your votes, and they are continued. Thank you.
We also have one item on the consent docket today. You need to ask for additional.
Yes. Are there any additional requests for continuances today from the public?
We can actually just hear everything in order because we only have one consent item.
One consent item, ABC 866, for an ABC 2 overlay of the C-3 district located at 12086 North May Avenue.
No approval. We have a motion and a second to approve item 1. Cast your votes, and that's approved.
Item 2 is SPUD 920 to rezone 2415 North Walker from SPUD 961, Urban Design and HL to SPUD 920.
I had a question about this item. Is this, is there an arts commission that this has to go to? I noticed there was a reference in the staff report to the HP Commission, and that this has been heard by them and approved.
Yes, murals go to Arts Commission for a recommendation, and I'm...
Do you know whether this one has?
I am not sure on the sequence. If staff maybe could say?
The spud itself is reviewed by HP. The mural goes through Arts Commission, and it has not been through Arts Commission yet, but the spud establishing the use goes through HP for a recommendation.
And so, oh, okay, I see, not the mural. Okay. So when will it go to Arts Commission?
I think it was supposed to go in this month, and I think it's been postponed, I'm not entirely sure, until next month, so that we'll actually approve the artwork.
Okay. So then, is there somebody that can reassure me that this is the one, the only change to this SPD?
I just wanted to make sure it's the only change to this SPD, or those two uses.
Absolutely, period, only change.
Word for word, the same as the existing PUD, but allows the mural use.
Okay. Is there anybody who wants to be heard on this item? Well, I spoke to Ian, so that's all right. I'll move for approval.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item 2. Cast your votes, and that's approved.
Item number 3 is SPUD 921 to rezone 800 Northwest 150th from R1 to SPUD 921.
Good afternoon. David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant, who is also with me, Mr. Tom Cowden. This is a spud that would allow what is now a large, single-family home on a large lot to be converted to an office. When we originally filed this, we did have some questions being raised by the neighbors to the south. The neighborhood is Glen Eagles. They did ultimately reach out and retain Mr. Eric Groves. Mr. Groves and I were able to work back and forth and ultimately come to an agreement on the spud. What you see before you on the screen is the aerial of our site. Although the house feels like it's part of Glen Eagles, you can see it certainly takes on a different feeling as it fronts on a major arterial, 150th Street. So what we've agreed to do is, and we revised the spud, which has been provided to staff, and I believe all of you as well, the only two uses allowed would be the office and single-family. The structure as is would remain, and we wouldn't be permitted to build additional structures or increase the intensity without going through this process again. I was advised by staff that there was a request that our base zoning be modified from O2 to O1. We likewise have agreed with that. We've modified the spud accordingly. So with that, I think what we have is a reasonable solution, one that certainly the neighbors agree is reasonable. If you think about it in terms of intensity of use, a single office this size, my client says he's had, you know, two or three employees, frankly is less intense than many of your homes probably were when you had teenage drivers. So we think it makes sense, especially considering what 150th Street represents. I think today, if somebody came in and tried to plack that home in front on 150th, it would probably not be viewed very favorably. We don't like access to be on arterials like that directly to homes. So with that, I would like Mr. Groves to confirm everything I told you was accurate, and after that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Eric Groves for Glen Eagles. A few things. When we first looked at this, we were concerned about a few things. We were concerned that it was a little open-ended, and, long story short, what we asked was, first of all, this structure remains in place and it doesn't get changed. No additional offices. We don't have any problem with O1 regs, but as the design statement says, there are limitations on that. And these limitations include, first of all, no administrative amendments. Can't come in and do those. If they decide they want to do something different with this building, they have to come back through the Commission and the Council. Also, we have restricted access to the lake. The only people who'll be permitted to come to the building are those who have business there, so it's not used as a place where people can come and have a picnic on the lake. And we also ask that there be no runoff of anything harmful to the lake. And the long and short of it is that it's just going to be the same house it always was, only he's going to be able to have an office in it. I don't have a problem with that. I know at least one member of the Commission is going to mention the long history we have in this city of converting residences to offices on places like Northwest 23rd Street and places like that. And indeed, that did not work out. In fact, it led to more intense zoning and ended up sometimes stripping out major arteries. I don't see that happening here. If they want to do something else, they've got to come back and ask for you to recommend it to the Councils. So really, there's not going to be anything different about it, except you can have an office in it. We're not unhappy with that. So, any questions?
I guess I have a question. I mean, are we talking about just like a home office? We're talking about, why are we doing this?
No. We're doing this because he wanted to make sure he did everything by the book. Certainly, he could have bought the property and just officed out of there, and probably no one would have known, but he will not live there. So it will be an office, not a home office. But the concern that shared by one of the Commissioners, as Eric, I think, adequately addressed, we are very specific in our spud that if it's anything but what you see today, we're going to have to come back with a new zoning case. My client has no intention of doing anything but officing out of the structure as it currently exists today.
I might add, there's only two use units on the design statement. O1 with the limitations, development regulations, and residential. So it's R1 and O1.
So all of the other references to O2, building height, building size, number of buildings, setback lines, all of those things that make reference to the O2 regulations are now going to say the O1 regulation?
And they already do. We've worked back and forth, sent it to Eric, modified it to all O1. Your staff has it, and your staff report probably doesn't reflect it, but it was my understanding that they maybe emailed it to everybody. But yes, it all says O1.
When we revised the design statement, we said O2 regulations in general, but no increase in height, no increase in size. So any, and now it's O1 rather than O2, which is more appropriate, but those regulations do not apply to the things that are in the design statement, which basically say, no changes, stays as it is.
And so then, let's talk about signage.
Okay.
Our staff report has the language that it always has, that all freestanding signs within the SPD, blah, blah. Although it says here, monument sign, eight feet high, 150 square feet, which is not quite right, isn't it? Isn't it 100 square feet? And how many signs are we really talking about, and particularly attached signs and so on? What kind of signage are we really looking at for this site?
Sure. What we have in our spud is six feet high.
Okay.
So we were asking for, you know, obviously, less than what the Commission normally likes.
And square footage on the sign?
How about we do the 100 square feet? Six feet and 100 square feet.
Okay. And will there be any attached signs? Will there be signs on the building itself?
There may be an attached sign.
He says no.
No, he doesn't want an attached sign. No attached sign.
Okay, I like that answer better.
Janice, watch the client, not the counselor.
No, let's...
Okay, well, I think that answers all my questions, then.
Okay.
This sits next to another vacant residence that's fallen into a state of disrepair. Neither one of these would ever redevelop for residential use, I don't think, going forward, and I think this is as minor an alteration to anything that would happen along 150th Street as is possible to obtain.
Is there anybody who's signed up to?
No one has signed up, and I don't think anyone...
Well, I have a question about this application. Is it possible that if this building, the house, ceases to be used as an office, to revert the zoning back to R1?
Well, it's included in the spud.
Right.
It's allowed within the spud. That's the only other use, is office or R1.
But if the business that's being conducted today stops, another business could go in.
Office only.
An office, an O1 office, right?
Right.
Or someone could move back in and use it as a residence house.
Those are the only two options.
The reason I'm pausing and not particularly opposed to it, that there are so many examples, as Eric said, in this city, that you've got, what, 23rd Street, 36th Street, 50th Street, et cetera, et cetera, and here's somebody that comes in and either gets an O1, O2, or a C-3, and it condemns the entire residential portion. And that's the only reason I'm paused on this, but John, as you say, you know, the condition of the house, what it is, and where it is, et cetera.
If you go west on 150th Street, if you go east on 150th Street, on the north side, on the south side, you have those office style, that are residential-style buildings, and their office parks.
Right.
Both directions within quarter-mile of this site.
On the TEs, what we have in terms of sidewalk regulations is that they're not contemplated. There's no, there are no sidewalks now. My client doesn't intend to change anything about the site. Certainly, if his use ceases and somebody were to come back in, they'd have to rezone it, and at that time, sidewalks would be needed. So we'd ask to delete that TE. He doesn't need a dumpster, so we're fine with 1, we're fine with 3. I think we can delete 4, because I don't think, it says a specific plan shall be required for any new building. I think the way it's worded is, we've got to go rezone it, so that, I don't think that's needed. We ask for a second drive on, and we show that in our site plan. I'm not sure if there's big concern by the Commission to have the second drive, but we'd like it, if possible.
It actually makes ingress and egress easier.
I would think so. So we would ask to delete TE 2, 5, and 4, and we agree with 1 and 3.
And 150th Street is widened, its four lanes and sidewalks do exist on the north side of the street.
And we have no objection to all that?
We just had a discussion this morning about the number of driveways there are along arterial streets. We had a picture of them, and one, and one, and one, and one, and one. I think it's a mistake not to just insist that there's one drive.
I can tell you, it's difficult, he's not willing to, or he's not asking to alter the site, including the driveway access. Very difficult to turn around and get out of that site using that one driveway if it's not just a family.
I think it would make it easier, like as the Chairman said, for flow of traffic, to be able to enter and then exit, and because it's an office, you're not dealing with flow of traffic.
Randy, could you comment on that? Because you made that presentation this morning.
On an arterial like this, the comp plan would recommend limiting the number of drives. And it's a large site with a low amount of traffic expected. They could easily put a turnaround in on-site that would allow them to come out face-forward. I think it's also difficult, I don't remember the exact measurements of the lot, but it's difficult to meet the 200-feet separation that's required by the ordinance as well, if I remember correctly. That's why the recommendation for one drive was made.
It's got probably 400 or 500 feet affronting it.
It's a very long site across 150th. I do believe, how about we say if we have the 200 feet, we can have the second drive. If we don't have 200 feet...
And you can meet it from the neighboring drive.
And what?
And meet the 200-feet separation from the neighboring drive.
Sure, yeah, we can do that.
You're okay with that?
It's not the preference, but it is a low-volume use. Would not be that detrimental to the arterial there. If we continue to do it over and over, it will.
I think in planner speak, that's a qualified yes.
Okay, no one else has signed up, Commissioners?
I take your point, and actually, I had thought about that, too. I wonder if we would want to make a notation that, you know, that the allowance of the additional driveway is very much tied to this use. If the site is redeveloped, and if it's redeveloped as a more intense use, then, you know, how many access points it has will have to be looked at again, with no, you know, sort of property right being granted by this allowance. I mean, I would be all in favor of that, if it's possible to do legal.
You can do that, they'd have to come in and rezone it anyway.
I think I would feel more comfortable if we make that notation, then, because I, we did just have this presentation this morning, we were talking about access under arterial, so...
I think what we do is just create a TE that you've got to meet spacing, and then some language that would satisfy what you're seeking to do, and we're fine with that.
I certainly have no objection to it, Commissioner, but at the same time, I want the Commission to understand that if there were to be any application or any effort to further intensify the uses on this land, it would be resisted by Glen Eagles. You know, we're basically allowing it an office because it's innocuous. Anything more intense than that, we would oppose.
And I think, to your point, I think, we can certainly add it, but I think it would be scrutinized regardless on any subsequent application. But, sure, so we could just add a TE to that effect.
So, anybody else want to be heard? I will move approval with the, okay, let's see if I can figure this out, with the deletion of TEs 2, 4, and 5, with subject to TEs 1 and 3, and to the addition of a TE with respect to this. Did I say that right? What about the driveway separation? Does that fall under one of these? That you can meet the 200-foot separation, not only between the two drives on this property, but between this property and the one next door?
Yes.
And also some language that, if the property is ever redeveloped to a more intense use, that those access points will have to be reconsidered. And no attached signs?
And no attached signs. Second? We have a motion and a second to approve item 3 as condition. Cast your votes.
Thank you.
And it's approved.
Item 4 is SPUD 923 to rezone 721 West Britton Road from SPUD 749 and C-3 to SPUD 923.
Mr. Hornbeek?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
This property has currently been purchased by Variety Care, and in fact, the small section in the very southeast corner, C-3 office, has also now been closed, and that property is parked. We closed on that on September 15th. So with that, there was, when we bought the property, it already had a spud. It was 749, and we're requesting some slight changes in that. One is that we could go to zero-foot setbacks to bring the buildings up to the property line along Britton Road, and then, I'm trying to remember what other major changes we had, Lance, other than the setback. Oh, and then we're providing an internal parking lot, that is, for all, we proposed three phases in this development, and could we go to that slide? There you go. Great. North is up she, and the first phase that we would start is this very southwest corner, the proposed clinic, and the parking, as we're proposing it, would have access only from Britton Road, from Walker, and from Klassen. We would not have any access to that parking from 94th Street or the residential side. And we're proposing also off-street parking along Britton Road and along 94th Street. I think those are the major changes from the last pud and this pud.
Commissioners, questions?
I have a compliment, actually, on the layout of what you proposed, and that is putting the buildings towards the street.
Thank you.
You know, really, because we've talked about that a whole lot, and the parking behind, I mean, I really admire what you've done with this, because rather than a vast expanse of asphalt, there's a big box out there with, you know, two trees in the middle of the thing. This is a really, really nice plan, and I think it's going to be a really nice improvement all along Britton Road and 90 whatever street that is behind. So I have a big compliment about how you've designed this whole facility, and don't object to it.
Thank you, Mr. Bright.
I spoke to Mr. Hornbeek before the meeting about the idea of getting the on-street parking off of 94th Street. And so, we're going to find a way to do that, to get it onto the two side streets, which I don't see the name of right off of that, rather than across 94th. They've limited access onto 94th, which is great, but it doesn't do a whole lot of good to limit the access if you saw parking there, so we're going to, he's going to redesign a little bit, pull it down to the side streets, and get it off 94th.
They couldn't.
Which alleviates really my only concern. This will be such an upgrade to this area. It'll be a wonderful, wonderful replacement for what's there, and just a boost to the area, I think, generally. Is there anybody who's signed up to be heard?
No, those are Klassen and Chertel.
Klassen and Chertel.
Did I say Walker? I'm sorry. It's Klassen and Chertel. You're correct.
Well, if there's not anybody else who's signed up to be heard, I'll move for approval.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 4. Cast your votes, and it's approved. Thank you.
Item 5 is SPUD 924 to rezone 744 Southeast 25th from R2, O2, and SPUD 435 to SPUD 924.
Commissioners, staff, Steve Dodson, representing applicant LBL Investments, we're seeking to rezone the site at 744 Southeast 25th from R2 to O2.
And what is there?
Currently, positive changes operate a classroom setting, providing psychiatric services to K through 12. They've been operating there for 11 years.
User's going to remain the same?
The user will remain the same. They'd like to expand the site by approximately 6,000 to 8,000 square feet and relocate the parking lot.
Okay.
I have a question about this. If the expansion is subject to the removal of the Humane Society, why are we continuing to have the animal cells and services use unit as part of the overall pack?
The expansion will not affect the Humane Society site.
Oh, I thought it said that it would be expanded after the Humane Society was removed.
You see the Humane Society in the corner on 26th and High, and the expansion is adjoining the drainage on the other side of the site.
Hmm.
It's the intention of the applicant at some point to acquire the Humane Society site from Oklahoma City, if we can find an alternative location for the Humane Society operations. We're seeking to include their spud in this spud that we have before you today.
Why do we need automotive parking lots as a principal use rather than accessory to the...
I'm sorry?
I'm saying, why do we need automotive parking lots as a principal use rather than accessory to the primary use, which is...
I'm not sure. I'm sorry.
It's not necessary, if you want to delete it.
Oh, let's do that, then. I mean, you'll have all the parking you want for your facility, but just, you can't turn it into an APCO parking lot.
Is there anyone signed up to be heard on this matter?
No.
I'll move for approval.
Deleting the automotive parking lot as a principal use?
Yes, deleting the automotive parking lot as a separate use.
Is there a second? We have a motion and a second to approve item 5 as condition. Cast your votes, and you're approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 6 is SPUD 922 to rezone 3001 Northeast 23rd from R1 to SPUD 922.
Give us your name and address, please.
Samuel Gittau.
And your address?
3001 Northeast 23rd Street.
Thank you. And you're wanting to change the zoning in order to conform it to the existing use, or what?
To use as an office.
And how's it used now?
It's vacant.
Okay.
Have you read the TEs, the technical evaluations, requirements that you provide sidewalks and limit access to just one drive?
Yes, I went through that, yes.
And are you okay with that?
Yes, other than the sidewalk, that's the part that I didn't really understand.
So you had to provide a sidewalk along Northeast 23rd Street within your property boundaries?
Okay. Okay, that's no problem.
Okay, good. No one has signed up. I'll move approval. Second. We have a motion and a second to approve item 6. Cast your votes, and you're approved. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Item seven is PC 10471 to rezone 2315 North Penn from R1 to O2.
I'm George Marquez with Crafton Toll, 214 East Main. What we have here is a site that is currently vacant. It's a third acre in size, and our client's intent is to rezone that to O2 to permit him to extend parking lot into that site. Adjacent to the east is an existing building that's currently used as an optical retail place, and our client's going to convert that business into something different.
Into what? I'm sorry?
He's going to turn it into a check cash-in place. And so they need that additional parking lot behind the building.
I have a question. Does that require O2 zoning, JJ?
What's your question, John?
I want to know if it requires O2 zoning to do that.
It could be O1.
If it can be O1, and you can have the parking, is that okay?
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Well, then, my question still is, if it's O1, and you have this parking lot adjacent to residential places, it's R1, west and south, right?
Right.
Are there any requirements that there be landscaping or site-proof screening between parking lot and those houses?
There is.
Is there site-proof screening and landscape buffer required adjacent to residences?
That's in the O1 parking lot?
Yes.
Great, okay. Yeah.
No one signed up. Well, and that, oh, one thing further, is the lighting needs to be directed away from the residences.
It will be directed from the residences, yes.
Yeah.
Right. We will meet ordinance with lighting.
I move approval. With the change to O1 from O2?
Oh, yeah, changing from O2 to O1.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item seven as condition. Cast your votes, and you're approved.
Thank you.
Item eight is C6848, final plat of Skyline Trails Edition.
Good afternoon. Chris Anderson with SMC Consulting Engineers, 815 West Main, representing the developer. We have read the staff report, agree with the TEs, and request approval of the plat.
No one signed up. Move approval. Second, we have a motion and a second to approve item eight. Cast your votes, and it's approved.
Thank you.
Item nine is KC6849, the preliminary plat of Crown at Lone Oak.
Mr. Chairman, Members of Commission, Brian Coon, representing the applicant. This is part of the Lone Oak PUD that was approved back in 1999. This is one of the first apartment tracks out there. We are turning in today as a preliminary plat. We will be constructing a road from Northwest 150th up to the site, where it says subject, so the apartments will really be up on that long rectangle. In the future, you'll see another plat for what we're going to do on each side of that roadway. We'll probably do probably some residential office-type things, but we don't know that yet, but that's most likely what it'll be. But it will conform to whatever the existing zoning is. We've already met with water and sewer, as far as how all the water's laid out and all that, so we've done that. We do need a variance. This road will go to a cul-de-sac at the north end, and then there'll be a gate to get into the apartments. There will be ultimately a road out the north end of the apartments that tie into the future road that goes out to either over to Portland or up to 164th, but it's not yet. But we have already been working on some preliminary layouts of that. We now have our flood study approved, which if you remember from many, many years ago, we had a lot of issues about floods out there, flood studies. Those are all now approved. So we're working on future uses going to the north. So the road system that you see there will be done, but not quite yet. So it'll come with the next couple phases, so. No, actually, since the PUD was done, Northwest 150th obviously has been widened, and there's getting ready to be a new signal light at the entrance at Remington and Lone Oak East, which was a lot of discussion. You were part of that back when you were on council, I'm sure. So, but so there will be a light to the west of this, but at this point, we'll just be bringing our traffic out on the 150th.
We do have someone signed up.
Yes, sir.
Tim? Tim, give us your name and address for the record, please. Thanks.
Good to see you.
Good to see you.
Tim Munson. I live at 4013 Northwest 143rd Street, I mean, 4316 Northwest 143rd. I am here on behalf of the residents of Remington, or at least a subset of them. I'm currently the homeowners association president. Our concern, or my concern specifically with the plan as it is depicted, is there's going to be, there's already about 350 to 400 homes, you can see on the west side there that are currently being, about to be built. The lots are in place. All of that traffic is coming right off into 150th, right in front of Remington. And I spoke with Mr. Coon to see if there would be any consideration given to possibly not having that traffic from the 300-unit apartment complex come to 150th, but instead go north from the outset to give a little bit of leeway for, there is going to be a light put in, but it's not there yet. Since the construction at the overpass there at 150th and Portland has been completed, there's been a significant amount of additional east-west traffic on 150th, making it more difficult to get in and out. In the short term, this is only going to add to that issue. It's my understanding, and Mr. Coon expressed, that there's going to be some small office complexes along that southern exit there. I'm not sure, but, you know, if I had a small business in there, I don't think I'd want 300 apartment-unit dwellers coming through in front of my business every day to get to 150th. There's going to be additional apartments to the north, is my understanding, at some point, that will use that north exit. So why not go ahead from the outset, make that the primary method of entry and exit to the north? Once those apartments, once the businesses get in there, you know, if you want to have that as a secondary, but, but right now, it's just, in the short term, it's going to be a really, really big issue for traffic. It's only going to get worse, but right now, there's no stoplight or anything there, and I would just ask for consideration of that. I don't know if a traffic study at this point would help substantiate my anecdotal, you know, observations, but I can just tell you that it's getting more and more difficult.
Now, the only problem with that suggestion is that it just seems to me, because I'm certainly well-familiar with this area, and I'm also well-familiar with the traffic and the area. If you send those folks out to the north in the first instance, then they're not going to be able to take advantage of the improvements that we're making currently to 150th and also at Portland. I mean, and your, 150th is going to be done when? Anybody have any idea? I mean, that intersection's underway right now, right? 150th and Portland.
That's done. That's completed. At the overpass, that's completed.
And then, but if we send them back up north, then they're going to have to go west, back to poorer roads, in my view, back to Meridian, right? In that 164th, they have to go clear back to.
If, they could go due east and get on, I mean, Portland Avenue extends up, you can see that on the right-hand side, on the east side.
But the road, they're in the road back over to Portland from the north, right?
Yes, there is. That 164th, there is, but it's two-lane. 164th is two-lane. So if we went up to 164th, you could go over to Portland, but it'd be on a two-lane road.
Okay. Okay, I got it. It doesn't look like that, so that is 164th that you catch at the very top?
No, that's only a half-mile. There's another half-mile on further.
Ah, okay. All right, I got you. So that, you're, okay, I understand now.
Yeah, so basically, there's nothing up to the north at this point that's just open pasture. So if, and they're going to build that road at some point anyway, I just would ask consideration that they go ahead and do that now, knowing what they're going to do up there along that road in the future, is that another 300 to 500-unit apartment complex?
So, but for clarification, that means going, what, 3/4 of a mile north from, rather than coming up from 150th?
It'd be over a half a mile, and it'd be two large creek crossings. And it would be dumping the traffic onto a two-lane road. You know, traffic has, traffics looked at this, 150th was built for this purpose. There was no traffic study needed because of the number of cars. Most of the apartment complexes we've done on major arteries have one entrance, and most of them don't have lights. I mean, this, that 150th is built for this, I mean, they knew this was coming when they built 150th. So I think if we took them to the north, it'd be a worse problem, because you'd be taking them to a two-lane road instead of the four.
And the discussion of the light that you've both mentioned, where will that?
That is further to the west. It's at the, it's the entrance to Remington, and it's the entrance to Lone Oak East. And in our agreements during the PUD and all that process, the developer of Lone Oak East has agreed to pay for a big portion of that light. It just doesn't happen until a certain number of homes are sold.
I remember that discussion. The entrance of Lone Oak is lining up with the entrance of Remington, then?
Yes.
So it doesn't, if you look at what we've got here, they look to be a little, you know, it doesn't, it's not represented.
They do line up. And then there's another entrance of, and as you can see on this drawing, the east entrance of Lone Oak East lines up with the entrance to, I think it's called Monticello.
Yeah, okay.
So this is just, and, and this is not in the same school district, so anyhow, any schools aren't going to be going back that way where all the other traffic was concerned that they were, so.
Okay. Thanks. All right. Commissioners, any further questions of Brian or Mr. Munson? Okay. Discussion?
I received one letter. Mr. Mississippi, Mr. Mississippi, Paul, you're in 35. Is there a couple of letters? 35, 234, 374.
No, it's not. Mike, Pat, you're Mike? Thank you.
I received a letter complaining about the traffic going into this area. They estimated 600 cars a day, plus school buses, going in there. Lone Oak School on 100, or Deer Creek School, rather, on 164th.
This will not be going to Deer Creek Schools. This is in Edmund Schools.
Edmund Schools, okay.
And that's been one of the confusions, because some, but letters went out to the neighbors saying this is going to really impact Deer Creek Elementary School, and it's not in the Deer Creek District, it's in Edmund. And we do need one variance, too.
I'm sorry?
We do need, we are requesting a variance for the code segment.
TE3, I know that. Okay, Commissioners, any further discussion? If not, we have a variance request on TE3. I'll move variance to TE3.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the variance. Cast your votes, and it is approved. I'll move the application.
Second.
Motion to approve item nine. Oh, the variance. Did you vote the variance, Pat?
Vote for the variance.
You're for the variance?
For the variance.
Okay, then, that's, votes, the variance is approved. And now we have a motion and a second to approve item nine. Cast your votes, and it's approved.
Item 10 is PC 10470 to rezone 51541 Northwest Second from R3 to I2.
My name is Angela Flores, and I'm representing Pipkin &amp; Sons Painting LLC. This piece of property is some property that we acquired recently. It was zoned R3, had three residences on it. We demolished them because they were of no value. We would like to get I2 zoning so that we can install eight-foot site-proof screening fence along the front property line for security purposes, and this is something that would be required in order for us to install this type of fence. At a later time, we will probably, more than likely, develop the property into some type of storage.
Do you own the property immediately to the west?
We own the property immediately to the west, yes.
And are you using it now?
There's an office building there.
Okay.
And we also own the property to the north.
Okay. Is there a reason you need I2 rather than I1 zoning?
Not for the fence. The fence would be allowed in I1, and we would settle for I1 zoning if, you know, you'd rather us do that.
That, that is the staff's request in the report to us, so if you would be agreeable to that.
Okay.
That would.
But, but I have a hesitation to approve this without you coming in with an, with an SPUD. This is an unknown factor, this particular area, part of which, this morning, we talked about a little bit, about West Main Street, but it was that same area. It has lots of potential, and straight zoning isn't the answer for future development purposes, which means there's no, there's no plan. I think I need an SPUD to know that there are certain limitations on what you're going to do, what uses, what building materials, et cetera. Even though you go by this area and you say, well, what the heck, it's destroyed anyway, you've got the hotel at one end of that street, and at the other end of the street is Pennsylvania, and it has a significant amount of potential that you sit on, your land you sit on, and I'd like to see you come in with an SPUD and tell us what you want to do.
Janice?
I have a question, typically a question to the staff, I guess. I note that under the evaluation of environmental sensitivity, that it indicates that this is a, this property sits above a high aquifer vulnerability area, and I just wonder what that triggers for us in terms of the evaluation of an industrial rezoning request? I mean, how should we be thinking about that?
I think that there are some policies, if Randy or Jared want to add in on this, but there are some policies in the comp plan about mitigation for environmental uses, and typically, the recommendation is to put it in a pud or spud so that you could address how you might mitigate runoff, drainage, if there's impervious surface area, what happens with water. So environmental issues can be designed and mitigated through, or mitigated through design, through a PUD or an SPUD.
Okay. You agree with that statement?
Exactly.
And the other, the other thing, I just, I agree with Bob. When I first read this application, I, this is an area that is, to say it's in transition is the understatement of the year, and, you know, it wasn't very long ago that you would have almost written it off as the transition going absolutely into, you know, industrial, and you don't have to think about that anymore, but that's just not true now. I wonder whether we ought to stop before we do something that we'll regret later and think about the area maybe a little bit as a bigger picture, and think about how this particular piece of property fits into it. I don't think that anybody up here is, has a problem with your fence, but it's what goes along with it, with industrial zoning. And I think if, at a minimum, probably, just given how many people are sitting here today, you're going to want to take a continuance and think about it a little bit, think about whether it wouldn't be a better request for you to put it into an SPUD, or maybe see if there's some other way you can achieve what you need to achieve as far as your fencing than to rezone the property. I just, that would be my recommendation to you.
Well, we also have the property that is just north of there, of the west corner. It is R2. The property, let me think, on Third Street, just west of Indiana is also I2.
Just east of Indiana?
Pardon?
Just east of Indiana, where the warehouse is. West of Indiana is R2 property.
West of Indiana and north of Third.
Oh, oh, north of Third, I'm sorry.
Is I2.
Yeah, this is a crazy mix of uses over here. There's no question about that.
And that is also our property.
But I think that's part of what gives us pause. It's exactly that. It's the fact that it is such a mix and such a patchwork.
Any other comments, Commissioners? Pat, did you have something?
I would.
Well, I think Janice is right. There are at least two votes that would deny this today, and there are only six of us here, and four of us can't approve it. I mean, it would take a minimum of five. So, I mean, we can vote on your application, but if I'm counting votes, it will not pass today.
Okay.
So the suggestion is from Commissioner Ryan that you take two weeks and think possibly consider using a SBUDD as an option? It's up to you. You can ask us to vote, and we will.
Well, if we go for a SBUDD, we'd have to reapply.
That's a question for legal, if they lose the vote, do they have to reapply?
Yes.
The answer is yes, according to municipal councillor.
But maybe there's, I mean, Janice's suggestion, if your issue is just the fence, maybe with staff, you can work out what it is that you could, you could do a fence without affecting the entire property that you want to have rezoned I1 or I2. I want an SPUD filed on this property, but if there's a way to fix the fence, if that's what your first objective is, then perhaps the staff can guide you how to do that.
But we can't do a site-proof fence in the present zone.
Yeah. You wouldn't be able to do it with current zoning.
I guess her point is, that she's not making is, when she comes back, even if it is an SPUD, the base zoning is going to be that which allows her to do a site-proof fence, which my understanding is going to be some I use. So if you're looking for something less than industrial than as a base zoning for her use, she's got to have, she's got to have that. Not that I'm advocating, not that I'm schooling you, but that's what she's got to have. So I guess my point is, with respect to the SPUD, what you're going to get when you come back is an I2 use.
Or an I1 use.
An I1, an I1 base SPUD, which she said she's agreed to now. So I don't get what we're getting.
Well, Mike, I mean, if it's not I1, I2, are you suggesting, are you suggesting that the fence can be established with a much lower zoning category?
No, I don't think it can.
Fine.
Not site-proof fence on the front property line.
We can meet with her over the next couple of weeks. The fence could even possibly be accomplished through a board of adjustment.
That's another, that's another application for her, though, JJ. That doesn't make her life easier, for sure. Well, the only thing an SPUD accomplishes maybe is you can ask for some landscaping around it or something.
I agree with Mike.
Or limitation of uses.
Yeah.
Well, we would be willing to settle for I1.
Yeah.
Because I1 would give us the site-proof fence in the front property line.
And allow her to continue the use that she currently makes.
And allow us I1. I hate to be dense.
Could we do a variance?
Somebody explain to me why you need industrial zoning for a site-proof fence? People put up site-proof fences everywhere all the time, don't they?
We want it on the front property line.
Oh, on the front property.
Mm-hmm. Hence, the industrial request. She's got to have it. So I guess, you know.
Right. That's why, you know, we're willing to settle for I1.
I get the statement with respect of transitional and those things, but it doesn't sound like we're going to get a lot.
I'm listening to JJ. Just continue it for two weeks.
I'm happy to continue it for two weeks.
Continue it for two weeks, get with the staff, get with JJ, and maybe you can come back and conjure up some variance for the base zoning, or something to let you do what you want to do. But I would suggest that a two-week continuance.
Okay, well, Mr. Ryan has a motion on the table. If we have a second, it was to continue it for two weeks.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to approve, or, excuse me, continue item 10 for two weeks. Cast your votes. And it's continued.
There you go.
Eleven and twelve are deferred.
That's right. Item 13 is PUD 1623 to rezone 12231 North Air Depot Boulevard from AA to PUD 1623.
Mr. Chairman, Members of the Commission, Brian Coon, representing the applicant. You heard a little bit about this a couple of weeks ago. Our first item is, of course, the zoning, but our preliminary plat and master development plan are one and the same, 10 acres on the southwest corner of Northwest or Northeast 122nd and Air Depot. The comprehensive plan calls for two acres, lots. I would just kind of refer to your staff report a little bit. One of the comments talks about to the east and north is zoned RA and developed with large lot residential ranging from one to two acres in size. Another comment from staff, the general area is a large lot residential with the vast majority of lots in the surrounding four square miles being one acre or larger. One of the comments that I think threw people for a loop was I had that there was no minimum lot size. Well, what that comment is, is that we're not, that we don't have to comply with the minimum lot size of the RA zoning, which is the two acres. So it's, we do have minimum lot sizes, we've got them on our preliminary plat, which are also a part of the master development plan. One of the things also that is in your staff report that I think Mr. Groves will probably be alluding to a little bit, not on my side of the comment, but just, I want to just bring it up. But this 10 acres in the northeast portion of it is about five and a half acres of green belt, what I'm going to call a green belt. It's actually in a flowage easement that is from the Corps of Engineers. They purchased this easement many years ago. It's called, what we call in our industry, the 1033 line. So if Arcadia gets full, the water will back up to an elevation of 1033, which is what that line, and the rule says you cannot put any fill or excavate in that area. So no structures could be built as far as houses. We could do a road, but not any fill or excavation. So what we've done is, I tried to come up with something creative that we could utilize this property and yet still maintain that area. And again, in your staff report, it says the rural medium, the RM land use topology recommends minimum lot size of two acres with a decrease to one acre if the preservation of an environmentally sensitive area is included. And that's what we're trying to do. We could come in and just gerrymander this thing into five two-acre lots. You'd have five driveways out on the arterial, and I think just recently, I heard some people talk about number of drives on an arterial. This plan would still allow five homes, but only with one driveway onto Air Depot. So I think it would eliminate four other driveways, and you would not increase traffic in any way, it'd still be the same five homes. So last meeting, Mr. Weddington, one of the protesters that lives immediately south, owns a five-acre tract, brought up some concerns, so we, you asked us to continue it for two weeks. We did. We had a meeting last week out at River Oaks Golf Club. Mr. Weddington showed up with Mr. Groves. We also had a gentleman show up, actually, his wife, they live in Shadow Ridge, and his wife called me that afternoon, and we played phone tag quite a bit, but I did end up talking to her, and she ended up, at the end of the conversation, she said, "This thing sounds fine, it sounds like it's compatible with Shadow Ridge. These lots are going to be anywhere from $130,000, $150,000 lots, they'll be nice, 3,000 minimum square foot homes, you're looking at at least half million dollar homes, so I think it will fit into the neighborhood." But anyway, he showed up, her husband showed up at the meeting, stayed after and said, "Hey, I like this, looks good to me, I won't even see it." If you've been at the property, the, it is so wooded, it's just really overgrown, especially along Air Depot. You know, you see the pond if you're on 122nd Street, but from Air Depot, it is just thick, and it's hard to see the homes back to the east. So that's what we're trying to preserve, is that area. I have an exhibit that I'd like to pass out if I could.
Brian, isn't there?
The term setting the precedence comes up a lot in this, in this room. One of the things that this exhibit shows is that Shadow Ridge to the, to the east is about 157 acres, 122 lots, so it equates out to .75 lots per acre. And it is, that acreage, you can see on your map, where it shows RA, the RA designation, that's not much different than what we have. It's green belt that goes through that subdivision, so I've included it into that calculation. To the north, there's a street, I think it's called Country Hall or something like that. That is 18 lots on 24 acres, so .76 lots per acre. Back to the west, Hunter's Drive, up to the north and west is seven acres, 7.81 acres with seven lots, so it's .9 lots per acre. Well, if you take the least dense of those three, which is .75, multiply it times our 10 acres, which is how you calculate that, we could have seven and a half lots. Obviously, we don't want to do that. So we're not, we feel like we're less than what the, some of the surrounding neighborhoods are, and I didn't even go south to where River Oaks is. River Oaks is one acre lots, and a lot of them. So we don't think we're setting a precedent by doing this, and I believe that every time we, you know, we used to have this argument in Urban Development Committee about can you count all the land you own, and I think you can, when you look at density. And we're trying to preserve that six acres, or five and a half to six acres, of green space, instead of cutting it up into five two-acre lots, which would meet your plan. We just feel like this is a better, a better use and fewer driveways out on the section line. So with that, there are, there are four TEs. Of course, we agree with one. The second TE talks about 25 feet separation between lots for a building if it's an aerobic system. We would like to, and we talked about this a little bit last time, we'd like a 10-foot sideline for buildings, but definitely hold with the 25 for any aerobic system. So I'm okay with that, and I think that's what that meant. We would like to delete three and just go with the plan that we've submitted to you today, and then we will, and we agree with four, that we'll put some language in on that common area, and when we come back with the final plat, that that will be preserved. They want to clean out the dead stuff, that land has been completely unmaintained for a long time, so they want to make it where the neighborhood could enjoy it, but get rid of the dead trees underneath. So with that, I'd be glad to answer your questions.
We'll hear from Mr. Groves, and then we'll come back.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, Members of the Commission, I represent Charles Weddington, who is the leader of the protest movement to this particular PUD. I'm joined today by Catherine Maxon from the Rob Elliott Architectural Firm, and we're handing you some exhibits, not asking you to read them, they'll be for your reference in the event there's some misunderstanding of what things say. I was amused by Brian's comment about the anecdotal evidence of support from Shadow Ridge. Seems like he talked to a lady in Shadow Ridge, and it was okay with her. Well, I've handed you a diagram, which I've blown up here, of who's opposed to this. The answer is everybody. Here's Shadow Ridge to the west of the proposed site. We have 82% of Shadow Ridge opposes this, and in the packet that I've handed you, Exhibit 1 are signed petitions from Shadow Ridge. It is opposed on the east by Shadow Ridge, opposed on the north by this neighborhood, opposed to the west, and opposed to the south. So there may be one woman in Shadow Ridge who doesn't mind this, but everyone else does. Let's begin at the beginning. The property to the south and the west, I don't share Brian's characterization of those properties, they're five-acre tracts. Mr. Weddington is here, he owns such a five-acre tract to the immediate south of the subject property. We have five-acre tracts to the west, we have five-acre tracts to the south. Shadow Ridge is a little different, but it's still RA, and as I say, they are opposed to it. His master development plan and his preliminary plat reflects the subject property as 10 acres. Now, this is one of these situations with, which the commission has seen many times before. Developer comes along and buys a piece of land that's in a floodplain. 5.75 of the 10 acres are in a floodplain, can't be developed. That leaves them about four acres to work with. And what they want to do is they want to put five tracts on four acres. It's going to add up to be lots that are less than an acre. Next two lots that are five acres or better, both on the west and the south. Now, the PUD also says no minimum lot size. I think Brian said we shouldn't be concerned with that because the plat's going to spell out the lot size, and whatever it is, it is, but it's not going to be anywhere near two acres. Also going to have a minimum lot width of 50 feet, and the setback reduction has been reduced from 40 to 25 feet. The staff report, and I've attached that, I think, for your convenience, or maybe I didn't, but anyway, you're familiar with it. The staff report at page nine says that the land use typology known as RM has a minimum lot size of two acres. That's what it says, and that's what this is. The exception is if there's to be preservation of an environmentally sensitive area, known as an ESA. The PUD in question says nothing about the preservation of an environmentally sensitive area. The plan uses the word designated ESA. Well, I don't know who does the designating, but there hasn't been any designation of this. And there is no plan, there's no identification of what it is to be preserved, and there's no plan to preserve it. Exhibit two in this packet of documents are excerpts from Plan OKC, and notably, what the plan says, that in rural medium intensity typology, the typical lot sizes in RM are two to five-plus acres. That's what it says. Now, I think this land would be more properly in rural low intensity rather than rural medium intensity, given the sizes of lots to the immediate west and south, but if it is rural medium intensity, the minimum lot size in that typology is two acres. The typical lot size is two to five or more acres, but the applicant wants five lots on four acres. Now, under our new plan, there's a trigger in rural areas. If the lot sizes are less than 40% of the adjacent lot sizes, then there's a problem. Now, I ask you, what is really adjacent to this subject property? Immediately adjacent to it, my client's property to the south, five-acre tract. Immediately adjacent to it on the west, five-acre tracts. Now, two-acre tracts are 40% of the five-acre tracts, and the staff says that, but that's not what they're proposing. So what it amounts to is that this proposal does not comply with the comprehensive plan in its most recent iteration. And what does the staff say? The staff says, "We recommend two acres per lot," and the preservation of trees, which we can talk about a little further. Well, this won't get it. Now, I concur with the staff on this, they have to be two-acre lots, and I would add that the folks in Shadow Ridge and the people to the east and west of this are not opposed to the development of this property. It's a nice property, and we asked Elliott to come up with a proposed revision. If you'll bring that up, Catherine. This is what we think can be done. Here's 122nd, here's Air Depot. The Corps of Engineers has a flowage easement on this land, and here it is. That green line indicates. Can't build on that, and of course, the developer knew that when he bought it. So what's left? This, a little over four acres. You can have two lots, here's one, 2.13 acres, here's another one, 2.13 acres. This conforms with the comprehensive plan. What Brian is proposing does not. Now, early on in our new Plan OKC, page 49, there is the remark that- Now, early on in our new Plan OKC, page 49, there is the remark that the key objective of land use planning is to prevent conflict between adjacent uses. But where this plan differs from those in the past is, this plan urges taking steps to mitigate incompatibility. And in this case, that can be done. There is incompatibility between these one-acre lots, if they're that, and five-acre lots, but there are steps that can be taken to mitigate that incompatibility, and one is the design that I just showed you. That may not be the only possible design, but it works. They can build two really nice homes there, larger homes, and I have no doubt that they'll be sold, because this is a nice place to live, if you like to live in the country. These steps need to be taken here. Now, as to the comprehensive plan, I need not tell you all how much work goes into the comprehensive plan. On behalf of the folks who go to the meetings, stakeholders, landowners, home builders, staff, we do it every so often, and I think that, given that work and given the commitment that we have to it, it should be adhered to. Now, if we, and the 40% rule, I think, is the key issue here. We have lots of five acres next to this proposed use. It just doesn't work. Now, I don't see a way around that. The only way around it, to do what Brian wants you to do, is to say, for some reason, we're just not going to stick to the plan in this case. Well, I don't see anything about this case that makes it an exception. Now, we are all for the preservation of environmentally sensitive areas, but there's no identification of how much of this is going to be in that category. There's no plan for it. We're certainly willing to listen to one. The plan has an objective of preserving 60% of the trees. We're all for that, but that exception is not available to the applicant here in the absence of some serious plan to implement what goes on in this ESA. Now, I know that, you know, we all like development. We all like new homes, but this is a special area. There's not much left of this in Oklahoma City. This is within the city limits, and it has character, and people buy homes out there to enjoy that character. There is something to be said for precedent. If you all allow this, it will be a precedent, and somebody can come back, buy up some of this land to the west or the south, and come back and say, "Well, you gave Brian five lots in contradiction of the comprehensive plan. Why can't I have the same?" So, it is a precedent, and it would not be a very good one. Answer any questions you may have.
Some time ago, several years ago, in connection with your comment, before we had this comprehensive plan under the old one, the issue of preservation of environmentally sensitive areas or natural topographical amenities on a particular section of land or, you know, the developable part. We discussed the ability to put more houses on a portion of that and then calculated the entire area as being in compliance with whatever the RA or the R1 was, because, because the design, the design of a developer, rather than cut it off the face of the earth and go just like that, will do this other thing where you could, we were allowing smaller lots where you preserve architecturally, I mean environmentally, you know, attractive areas, and therefore, you take the whole and comply. Five divided by, or 10 divided by five is two. Now, the lot size isn't, but is that policy still in place? Do we still abide by that?
It's not explicit in the comp plan that you do gross density versus net density on these lots, so what the staff report is citing in the comprehensive plan is that ratio between adjacent uses in terms of feathering the range of compatibility. So, the rural medium was intending to have larger lot sizes, up to 40%, as much as their adjacent lot sizes. So, that's the citation that our staff report based that two minimum lot size recommendation on.
And adjacent, does it mean across the street?
It typically means next door, immediately adjacent.
Immediately adjacent, that's what it means.
Right, which is what, what we were evaluating were the lots that would be to the west and the south primarily.
Commissioner Bright, I remember that argument because I fought it many times before this Commission, but that was about density. And what the argument was about, and Brian and I used to be on opposite sides of this all the time, was that I used to say, "You can't take into consideration when calculating density, land you can't build on." Remember? And, but that's not the issue here, you see. We're not talking about density. We're talking about a rule in the comprehensive plan that says adjacent, and I agree with the director, adjacent is right next door. If that's five acres, then you can have two acres, but you can't have less than that.
I have to say, when, when I look at this proposal, I am reminded of comments that Dick Coyle made to us one time about, you know, the, sort of the art of what he did as a developer being, to take a piece of property and work with it and work with what was there, and especially if it had, you know, a pond or a creek or, you know, something that could be made into a feature, and that he, he felt always that it was really important for the city to be able to allow people the flexibility that they needed in order to, to, you know, not just preserve, but to enhance and, and to, if you will, capitalize on, you know, those positive assets. And, I mean, what I see here is somebody who's taken a piece of property that is largely forested, tree-covered, whatever you want to call it. He showed us the first time he was here that he could divide it up into five, into five lots that would, you know, meet the minimum requirement, that would permit the individual lot owners then to control what happened to those trees. But what he was seeking was the flexibility to create a development on the site that doesn't permit any more total number of lots that would otherwise be allowed, but that does allow him to set up and provide for a mechanism to preserve those trees. And to me, that's like a big plus. I don't see it as a problem. I don't think that it is in contravention of the plan. I think it actually meets the specific language that has been quoted here today, and I, I do not understand the opposition to this application. I mean, I understand what they're saying. I understand the logic they're applying, but I, I don't understand it at all overall, just as a concept or a philosophy. You're going to end up with no more in number lots than would otherwise be permitted, but you're going to have a mechanism by which the trees will be preserved. Sounds like a win to me.
May I respond?
Yes, you may.
I respectfully disagree, and Exhibit two in this pack of exhibits is a photocopy of a part of the comprehensive plan. And the language that we've been citing, let's see if I can find it. It's at page 72, and the triggers on the left-hand column say residential lot sizes within UL or rural typology areas that are less than 60 or 40% respectively adjacent residential lots. Now, I don't see how we can deny the size of the residential lots. It's there. And I don't, I want to see this property developed. I'll tell you another alternative we've come up with, because we're, we're willing to talk, we're willing to haggle, but we just can't go for all these small lots. But for example, suppose we did three lots. We can't in good conscience sit still for what is clearly a violation of this plan. It's not just me, Commissioner Powers. The staff says so as well. You've seen their recommendations in the staff report. Two acres or better, and if they get away with this, you'll be hearing about it again, not just in this case perhaps, but in others. So, we have to stand our ground. We're willing to talk, make a deal like that one, but we can't go for five.
I have a suggestion. One, two, three, four, five. There's only six people here. I don't think you can get to five.
I hope not.
I mean, I'm just, you got one, but I don't know, I'm, I know you don't, there's one over there that's probably, I'm predicting won't, won't be with you. You're probably going to have to come back.
Can I, can I respond?
But you can respond, and I mean, you know, I'm just, there's three folks gone. I don't see how, how we're going to get.
And I understand that.
If you want it to get voted on, we certainly can.
No, not necessarily.
Okay.
But we were here before, and we asked for comments, and we got comments. We were, we were asked to go to a meeting, and we went to a meeting, and we gave everybody notice about this meeting. And then today, and one person from Shadow Ridge showed up, and that person said they were okay with it. So, that's all I can go by. And today, you get this map that says everybody in Shadow Ridge is against it, but it's five, if you look at the map. It's everybody who's on the ownership list. It's five of those. So, it's not everybody in Shadow Ridge, so I just wanted to bring that out. Now, as far as the comprehensive plan, I still want, I think page nine of the staff report is very important, because your staff said this, is that with a decrease to one acre, if the preservation of the environment of an ESA is included, TE number four said we will have an ESA, and I agreed to do that. I can make these one-acre lots if I can make the road private. We had talked to staff, they chose to make it private, and we, we've, we've talked about both. So, I can meet the staff report, I can meet what the comprehensive plan has in their language about going to one acre, okay? And I can meet what he said and what we talked about and what you brought up. We can cut this thing into five two-acre lots, very easy, but we'd have five driveways. I think that, I've heard from most of you for many years about, okay, that's what this, that's what we're in the box to do. But cluster housing is what Aubrey was referring to, and it used to be in the comprehensive plan. It was called clustering. When you had, and Dick Coyle was huge on that. If you had 160 acres, but only 60 of it was developable, but you kept all the other greenbelt, you used your whole land and you clustered your houses. Great concept, and they chose not to put that into the new plan, but she understands it. She's seen it in every textbook that I've seen. So, I appreciate your comments. We're trying to think out of the box, so we don't have five driveways on 122nd. Now, I agree that if there's two votes up there that are saying we're probably not going to go with it, we don't want to get denied today, no. We want to work with them. We've got an area that's three, but, you know, we're probably, we may come back and look at it as, okay, if I cut these into five, I can build driveways, I can use, and if I can borrow your exhibit, I can include some of this environmentally sensitive area into that lot. But if I don't go with the environmentally sensitive area, I can do whatever I want with that, or this home builder can. And I, that's not a threat. I'm not going to buy any of these lots, so I'm not threatening anything, but I'm just saying, this uses part of this flowage easement land, which means I can too, if I just want to use five two-acre lots. I can build a driveway in it, but I can't build a structure. So, if, if, if there's, if you're saying, you're shaking your head at me that this probably going to happen today, and you're saying it probably going to happen today, then let's continue and move on. I just wanted to hear all the facts today, because we've already been here once, we've already had a meeting. I just didn't want something new to come up next time, and then, you know what I mean? I want to, because I, we've always been able to work things out. There's no doubt that I want to know that, I want to know the facts.
Not all the time.
No, most of the time, we've been able.
I don't, I don't want to carry the discussion on too long, but explain to me how the flowage easement works with respect to what you can put on the site.
Okay, the flowage easement, I've read it many times. What it says is you cannot excavate or fill in that area. So, you can build a driveway, but you can't excavate or fill.
But you can't build on it.
No, I can build a driveway, I cannot build a structure.
You can't build a house.
I can't build a house, there's no doubt, no structures.
So, on, just again, for point of clarification, that approximately five acres on the northeast corner of that 10 cannot be built on under any circumstances?
I cannot build a structure on it, that's correct. I cannot build a home.
So, essentially, you can't build any houses on the?
That's correct. That's correct.
I just wanted to understand that.
Yes, yeah, but I could do a road. Obviously, there's roads in it, Air Depot, Northwest 122nd. So, I could build driveways. I could build driveways without getting to that area if I wanted to. Two of them could come off Air Depot, three of them could come off Northwest 122nd and Northeast, and I could get to my five two-acre lots. I'm just, I'm trying to think out of the box here and come up with something that, again, eliminates driveways. I think it's more creative, and it creates six acres of an environmentally sensitive area, so.
Okay, thank you. I understand.
Well, let's, let's cut to the chase. The Corps is not going to allow anybody to build on its flowage easement. That's that. They're not going to give you a 404 permit to build houses on that flowage easement, number one. The young fellows who bought this paid 170K for it, and it's not contingent, it's theirs. Now, if you pay that kind of money for a 10-acre tract where half of it is squishy, you got to take the consequences. We've all been down this road before, and the consequences are, you just don't get as many lots if you're going to be in conformance with the plan. Now, you all can go ahead and vote today if you want to, that's fine with me, or we can haggle it out, but it's up to you. You know, I'd like to save my clients some money. I mean, we can go through this, go to the council, you know, get a petition, force a supermajority vote, blah, 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 spend a lot of everybody's money. If we can work it out along these lines, it will be a real saving. So, I leave it to the Commission.
I don't know where the votes are, but I think maybe you want the continuance to take a couple of weeks to work it out?
From what you just said, yes.
You're the applicant, so you can ask for the continuance, and we'll do it.
I'd request a two-week continuance.
No, uh-uh.
Is that, let me?
Yeah. Second Thursday in November. I've got a conflict the first Thursday in November. I mean, the fourth, wait, second and fourth, fourth, the second meeting in November, yeah, I can't do the first.
October.
We're in October, so we're good.
Yeah, I know we are, but you'd be continuing to, oh, there is?
Yep. We're, we're continuing this two weeks. That's October 27th.
I didn't plan to be here. What's the next one?
November 8th.
Didn't want to be here either.
Then December 8th.
December? No, that's too long. I don't want to go to December. This thing's been going, yeah, no.
Yeah, that's right.
It's too long.
Oh, 27th.
So be it.
That's it. Okay, motion and second?
Thank you.
Cast your votes. Continue to the 27th of October.
Item 14 is KC 6844, the preliminary plat of Oakdale Woods.
What's this one?
For the record, Brian Coon, representing the applicant. Obviously, we would like that continued also. We'd like your approval, but we think we probably need to.
Motion? Second? We have a motion and a second to continue item 14 for the same two-week period, October 27th. Cast your votes. It's continued.
And item 15 is KC 6839, preliminary plat of Kennard Ranch.
Good afternoon. Kendall Dillon with Creighton Toll, representing the applicant, and this is an application for a preliminary plat that come before you a few weeks ago, and I did not have the privilege of representing it at that meeting, but it was continued. I know it was continued for a couple of different reasons, one being, you can, you'll notice Common Area B that we have in the far southeast corner. I think at the first meeting, there was some concern, or there was a request that we make a lot in the middle or try to provide a common area that's centrally located. So, that was one concern. The other thing got to be the street stub to the south on your previous staff report did not line up with the subdivision to the south, which is Legacy. Since then, we've resubmitted this preliminary plat. You will notice that the street stubs do line up. We're also the engineer of record for the Legacy addition to the south. Those street stubs- engineer of record for the Legacy addition to the south, those street stubs will line up, so we've submitted a new exhibit that illustrates that. We've also included, even though I'm not seeing it on this map now, but we have added an additional lot in the middle of...
The last time we saw this, it was like where that three is.
Exactly. It's right below the block three on Waikper Avenue on the west side. So, we do intend on giving up that lot as a common area so that it's centrally located. So, I think if you look at this application, obviously, it's existing zone, or the R1 existing zoning, so it's in conformance there. It conforms to your comprehensive plan, it conforms to your common area regulations, we're in agreement with all the six TEs, and we'd ask for your approval.
Okay, no one signed up, commissioners?
I'll move approval.
I have a comment on this application, and it's appropriate to our discussion this morning about how subdivisions are laid out, and how they're in a grid, and there's no access to any common area that I can see. We've got a lot of work to do with revisions of subdivision regulations to make this better than it is. It complies, I mean, there's nothing I can do about it, it complies. Hopefully, in a year or so, we have, this particular application would not ever be approved. You're not gonna, it just, traffic doesn't like it, the, I mean, we had this wonderful discussion this morning, and access to common areas, there's one on the way over in the corner, and nobody else at this, they can get to it. It's, you know, it's a very, not disturbing, but plain vanilla subdivision that is authorized. I mean, I, you know, you, this is, you can do this. Hopefully, in the future, you won't be able to. That's my comment.
Do we have a second, or do we have a motion?
Yes, we did.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item 15. We do. Cast your votes, and it's approved.
Thank you.
Item 16 is PUD 1624 to rezone 1602 Highland Park Boulevard from PUD 1134 to PUD 1624.
Good afternoon. David Box, 522 Callcore Drive, today here on behalf of the applicants who are also with me, Mr. Jalal and Mohammed Farzana. I want to start by thanking everybody for the time they gave to meet with us, to discuss this project. This was originally scheduled for the last meeting in September. The Friday before the, the next Thursday hearing, I got a call late in the day after 5 o'clock asking for a continuance, so that we could have the opportunity to perhaps meet and try to resolve any differences. My, my clients were willing at that time to continue it, so we did, we continued it to this hearing. In the between, we've only had one opportunity to meet. The representative, not Mr. Work, but one of the, the landowner's representative contacted my client, sought to have a meeting without the lawyers present, which was fine, to try to come to perhaps some sort of agreement. And what became clear is that there, there wasn't any discussion about the issues that are relevant to you, the planning commission. There wasn't any discussion about our PUD and about concerns that could be developed here. Rather, there was a focus and a discussion about what you see labeled as Highland Park Boulevard. The folks to the north have asked my client to pay $1,347, $1,347,403. My clients are not inclined to do that. What the folks to the north have essentially asked is for my client to write a $1.4 million check to access a public street. It's, it's odd to me, when you consider who my client is, they have drug sewer and water and laid streets for miles and miles and miles all over this city. One of the policies of the planning commission that was just discussed in the last case is interconnecting neighborhoods. My client has drug streets and water all through the city, and the next developer who develops the parcel next to him is the beneficiary of that sewer or that street system being there. My client doesn't have the right to go ask them to pay for it. That's the way development works. Development happens, and then more development happens next to it. So, I don't think that's a relevant discussion. I think if there was gonna be discussion among the parties, it should have been about the PUD. So, if we focus on the PUD itself, there's been a lot of discussion about the new comp plan. Well, that's something that's changed between what you see on the screen now. Originally, this was all gonna be R1. Well, things have happened. You, you have the Chisholm Creek development now. You've got a wonderful street, you've got the city giving millions of dollars to developers to entice them to develop there, like for the Cabela's. So, it's created a environment where what was planned for single family no longer makes sense. There needs to be a, a better and higher use, and what we propose, and I think it's important, if you, if you peel away all the, the issues that Mr. Work might address, what we propose is exactly what is allowed within the Chisholm Creek development. That being multifamily, office, commercial, and retail. So, from a use perspective, all we're trying to do is what the folks north of us are doing. Not only are we in the urban low intensity designation, but we're also in the transit oriented designation. And what that means, and it's found on page two of your staff report, the TO layer encourages higher density development, higher levels of transportation system connectivity and concentrations of housing and commercial activity around areas designated as mass transit stops. The intent is to create unique mixed-use districts with housing and employment opportunity around the city's future transit network. And that's what we have here. We have an opportunity to increase the density, to create a true live-work environment, similar to what they're doing north of us. Cindy, do you mind putting on the exhibit of the rendering? One of the things we've tried to do in this site plan is to come up with a visual, now the, I believe it's, right there. A, a visual to understand how this development would interact not only to Highland Park, to the north, but also to the south. This rendering is developed for no reason other than scale and mass. We are required to come back for a specific plan, so that when we're ready to build, those details and the design elements are gonna be able to be discussed, and ultimately decided by you, the planning commission. But what we wanted to do here was to make sure that what we proposed in terms of scale and mass was appropriate. So, what we've done on our southern boundary is limited to townhouse development, two-story, similar to any other single-family residential home that could be built. Then, when you move north of that, you have the, the larger mixed-use component, where you have a mix of retail, office, and ultimately multifamily. One of the other things that was important to my client is to make it a wrap project, that being residential around the parking, so that you have the parking shielded from the view to serve the multifamily. Now, there will have to be some element of parking, but we believe our site plan here, and ultimately the one that gets approved at the site plan stage, will be able to incorporate the desires of this commission to not have seas of surface parking. Attractive landscaping, limited parking to serve the drive-up retail, but with the bulk of the parking in the back. When you look at the uses that we propose, we are more restrictive than the Chisholm Creek PUD. I understand that was a heavily negotiated document, I was not involved in that. But, when you look at the uses allowed, our PUD is more restrictive and allows less uses than what's allowed north of us. When we turn next to architectural requirements, which are always important in these PUDs, our PUD is more restrictive, more cumbersome. What we have in ours is the language that the planning commission has grown accustomed to having, that being a 70% split of masonry type, type product, and then the 30% split with the others. And if you look at the Chisholm Creek PUD, which was approved May 27, 2014, it's been amended four separate times since it was approved. And what they require, or purport to require, is flexibility. There's absolutely no percentage given to masonry products. All that's required is consistent with an overall theme that's permitted flexibility. So, when you look at what's before this commission, our PUD is consistent with the comp plan, it's consistent and more restrictive with uses and architecture than what was approved north of us, and it makes sense. It makes more sense to have a true mixed-use development on this 16 acres than an additional 100 or 50 single-family houses with a row of stockade fence on this boulevard. There are a couple of TEs to address. We do agree with number one, we do agree with number two. On number three, we do agree with it, in talking with Mr. Chambliss, what I would ask is, it read, "The following uses shall not be permitted within 150 feet south and east of this subject site." Certainly, it's a mixed-use development, so there's gonna be residential within it. What we're trying to avoid, I believe, and, and Mr. Chambliss can confirm, is staying away from the traditional single-family around us. So, adding the south and east of the property, I believe, gets us there. Number four, building setbacks. We would ask to keep the, the no setback requirement we have on the frontage, but then the base zoning district, again, south and east, protecting the, the single family. Number five and six, we're fine with. So, we're okay with all of them with those additional south and east comments on number three and four. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, and would like the opportunity to get back up at the end after Mr. Work has spoken.
Well, let's hear from Mr. Work.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. My name is Kelly Work, and my address is 105 North Hudson, Suite 304. And I'm here in opposition to this proposed PUD on behalf of the owners of the Chisholm Creek development. The, the Chisholm Creek development, as you all know, is the area just to the north across Highland Park Boulevard. It extends from Western to Pennsylvania and up to Memorial Road. It is, it is a regional retail center that is partially developed, it's ongoing, as you know, and a, it is intended and designed to be a, a mixed-use development of retail, restaurants, entertainment, and office use. It consists of approximately 159 acres, and these owners of Chisholm Creek has, have made a significant investment, and they are continuing to make investments as this property is developed over what will be probably 10 or 20 years. This proposed Highland Park Village PUD that is before you today is comprised of this 16 acres just there on the south side of, of Highland Park Boulevard. It was previously preliminarily platted as single-family residential as an extension or the next phase of what is the Heritage Oaks, single-family residential neighborhood that is to the south, that is existing there, to the south and to the east. And what this applicant is now proposing to do is to change the orientation of this 16 acres and have it develop, be fronted, oriented towards Highland Park Boulevard. And they're proposing a high-density, multifamily residential set of uses that would include 550 apartments and 59 townhomes. And that total of 609 units, along with retail and commercial, they're also proposing, but that total of 609 residential units would amount to a residential density of 38 dwelling units per acre. There's no restriction on the type or character of the multifamily residential that they propose to build on this site. What the owners of Chisholm Creek would prefer to see is this property to be, to be developed as it was originally proposed by this developer as single-family residential. The single-family residential is a use that's not contemplated or allowed within the Chisholm Creek development, and we believe that it would be a complement to the Chisholm Creek area if this single-family residential neighborhood were to be built out as they had previously planned. If the commission is inclined to make a change in the zoning for this property, then what we would like to see is a PUD that is no less restrictive than the PUD that was approved for the Chisholm Creek development just in 2014. Mr. Box made reference to some amendments, it has not been back to the commission, there have been a few minor administrative amendments that have been done. But, the PUD itself was, for Chisholm Creek, was approved in 2014. As, those of you that were on the commission at that time may recall, the Chisholm Creek PUD was negotiated over a period of several months. And of course, one of the major concerns was that the commission, members of the commission that were involved in that process, did not want there to be a sea of multifamily residential created in this area between Western and Pennsylvania, in this area south of, the turnpike south of Memorial Road. And the solution that was fashioned through that negotiation for Chisholm Creek was that there is a ratio that was put into the PUD that requires that for, for, that each multifamily unit has to go hand in hand with the development of the commercial and the office that is also proposed to be built within Chisholm Creek. And so, there's a total limit of multifamily units in Chisholm Creek of 1,200, which, over the entire 159 acres, is less than eight dwelling units per acre. And the, and those multifamily units may only be done in Chisholm Creek as the commercial and office is developed. So, we can have one multifamily unit for 500 gross square feet of commercial, and we are allowed one multifamily unit for 250 square feet of office. So, the, so that was what was created or fashioned to make sure that what was going to happen in Chisholm Creek in this area, that where it would be assured, the city would be assured, that the mixed unit, the mixed-use development, excuse me, that was contemplated would actually happen, and that as the commercial and office is developed, then the multifamily would be allowed to come along in conjunction with it. The, there's nothing in the Highland Park PUD, this proposed PUD today, that would control the character or type of multifamily residential. That was another one of the restrictions that was fashioned through the negotiation for Chisholm Creek. There is, we disallow, there is a prohibition in the Chisholm Creek PUD for what has been termed garden-style apartments. And a definition was fashioned and was included in the PUD, and that type of multifamily development will not be permitted in the Chisholm Creek development. That's the typical walk-up, three or four-story multifamily residential surrounded by a sea of parking where the doors are all exit to the, to the exterior. That kind of multifamily is not going to be allowed under the, under the Chisholm Creek PUD. What the Highland Park PUD that is proposed before you today merely says that multifamily residential and townhomes are allowed, they'll be up to 609 units, it'll be up to 38 dwelling units per acre. There's no limitation or restriction on, on, on what the type or character of that multifamily will be. Additionally, in the Chisholm Creek PUD, there was a great deal of negotiation about signage, and there are limits both on the size and number of signs that will be allowed within the entire Chisholm Creek PUD, including the size of the display area. And if you look at the Highland Park PUD that's before you today, they did impose a limit on the height of signs that would be allowed, on the, on the monument-type signs that would be allowed of 15 feet, but there's no limit on the number that would be allowed. And there's also no limit on the size of the display area that would be permitted under this PUD. In our view, the, what has, what is proposed and what is before you today- In our view, the, what is proposed and what is before you today lacks sufficient detail and specificity in order to ensure that the development that occurs at this location is going to be beneficial for the, for this area and is going to be of the quality that the Commission and the city, we expect, would like to see. As a practical matter, as people enter this development on Highland Park Boulevard, which of course was improved as part of the Chisholm Creek Development, as a practical matter, this tract, this 16 acres, is going to be viewed as part of the Chisholm Creek Development. It's unlikely that it's going to have an identity apart from that. So we naturally are wanting to make sure that what goes there is going to be something that will, that will not detract from the character of the Chisholm Creek Development that, that, that these owners are attempting to establish. We believe that this PUD needs further work. We did make that suggestion to the applicant back on the 28th of September in a letter that I sent to Mr. Box, that, that they include in the PUD document regulations that are no less restrictive than the regulations that are included in the Chisholm Creek PUD, and they haven't responded to that request. I think it's incumbent upon me, I hadn't planned to talk about it, but I think I do need to respond because of the suggestion that Mr. Box has made, that, that we only wanted money from them and that that's what this was about, that I want to dispel that. That's inaccurate. For the Commission's information, and as you may know, the public improvements that have been installed in Chisholm Creek, including the roads, Pawnee Drive, the roads that extend from Memorial to Western, and Highland Park Boulevard that extends from Pennsylvania to Pawnee Drive, and all of the street lighting and all of the landscaping and all of the sidewalks that have been put in place that are there today, were paid for through two improvement districts that were petitioned to the city and that were approved by the City Council, and those bonds were sold. And so those improvements, and so there will be assessments made against the property owners that are included in the, in those two districts over a period of 15 years to pay for those improvements. This property, this 16-acre tract that is now the proposed PUD, it wasn't included in that proposed improvement district because they had a proposed preliminary plat for single-family residential. They weren't oriented at all towards Highland Park Boulevard. In fact, in 2012, they had been asked if they would like to participate in sharing the cost of the construction of Highland Park Boulevard, and their response was that that street would not benefit them. They didn't feel the need to share in those costs. So it didn't seem unreasonable for us to go to them now that they are changing the orientation of their development and want to utilize all of the improvements that have been installed as a result of those improvement districts and suggest to them, as we have, that they should participate as a member of the improvement district and pay their fair share. That's all we were suggesting, is that they join in the improvement district, they pay their fair share, which we calculate over a period of 15 years would be that $1.3 million figure that Mr. Box referred to. That is calculated based on their percentage of the area of property taken in with the entire Chisholm Creek Development. So that's what that was about. But what we're here today to call your attention to are the issues that we have about the proposed PUD. We don't feel that it has, provides adequate specificity or regulation that will ensure that this will be a quality development. If you approve it in this form today, what you're approving is 609 residential units at a dwelling, at a density of 38 dwelling units per acre, and that's it. There's no other regulation, there's no other restriction. And we suggest that there needs to be more detail, more specificity, to make sure that it's done in a quality way. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Just a few points regarding the density. He was accurate on the number, and I think it's important if you look at the transit-oriented overlay, what it contemplates is density up to 40 units an acre. So we're just slightly under that. So what we ask for in terms of density is completely consistent with what you have there. Their PUD has a number, I believe it's 1,200 units, and then they're, in there, allowed a provision that if circumstances deem necessary, they can amend the PUD to get more units. I certainly agree with Mr. Work. You know, one of the things this Commission, I believe, desires is that applicants and people in opposition work together. It's a, it's a bit frustrating for myself, and I know my client, that three weeks have passed, and it's, this is the first instance we heard of any specifics about our PUD. I continually asked Mr. Work, what are the specific concerns in our PUD? My clients are reasonable people. I'm sure if it's reasonable, we'll do it. I read their PUD, and again, I tried to fashion our PUD in a way that was more restrictive. I think they said, "No, less restrictive." I think we're more restrictive. We have architectural controls. They have flexibility. When that goes to the eighth floor, there's not going to be anything. There's no percentage. There's no one in the permit that's going to be able to say, "Well, I guess it's all EFS. You are allowed flexibility." So we have hard and fast rules. We have more restrictions on the uses. My client's willing to stipulate, we could add a TE, that we are required to have an element of commercial or office or something on that first floor so that it won't be the typical garden apartment. That is not at all what my client's desire is. Again, we have the parking in the middle of it, so it won't be the garden style. If there's some language that this Commission wants to come up with that would help them confirm that, we did that in the PUD for a glimpse here over on 63rd and Grand, to where we committed that the first floor, a portion of it, would have to be commercial. So what that guarantees is, it's all built as one building, so then you cannot just have your traditional garden-style apartment. You would have to have a true mixed use because you've committed to the commercial on the first floor. Well, you can't build the third or fourth floor without the first floor. So you've guaranteed that concern has gone away. But I believe if you read our PUD compared to their PUD, their PUD is much longer because they have a much bigger land area. We really have one project. They have multiple projects. They have densities in certain projects that are way far exceeding what we ask for with our PUD. But it's, we have never been given any indication as to what are these specific changes they'd like. All we have is the vague reference that it'd be no less restrictive. Well, I think that's what we've got. We've got a PUD that is more restrictive than what they have. It is 100% in line with the comprehensive plan, and it's something that will benefit this area, and we would ask for your approval. I'd love to answer any questions.
Kelly, anything back?
Well, just, I mean, we'll be happy to provide you all with copies of the two PUD documents if you would care to research that. But the, I think the key point is, is that the significant concern that we were responding to when the Chisholm Creek PUD went through was the concern that we not end up in this area with this sea of multifamily residential use. And so that was the reason why there was the, the ratio that was put in place to require that the commercial and the office would go hand-in-hand with the multifamily, and that there'd be a limit on the amount of the multifamily. That's the principal restriction. And then, of course, there was an awful lot of discussion, discussion about signage. So we've got those significant restrictions on, on the multifamily that will be allowed in Chisholm Creek, the signage that will be allowed in Chisholm Creek. Neither of those are present in this proposed Highland Park PUD, and we suggest they should be.
Well, as one of the people who was very involved in the Chisholm Creek negotiations, we were certainly concerned with the concentration of apartments in Ward Eight in particular. And so we were pretty careful about how we crafted that. On the flip side, disappointed to hear this discussion come today and not
Yes.
Not sometime before today.
Yes.
And that is troublesome for me.
I agree.
I also think that this is a significant proposal in what I consider to be a key And I do not like to prolong things. I like to get them in and out and through whenever we can. I think in this instance, I'm going to ask somewhat reluctantly that you get together in the next couple of weeks. And if you can, come to some agreement that you're both comfortable with. Otherwise, we're going to be asked to, you know, decide what we do with the baby that's before us.
I think what Commissioner Yoko is saying is that it, that the road issue, frankly, is not one that I care about. I have no, I can't make any decisions about that. It's a public street. If there's ways to get together to discuss the land use characteristics and things that, as you say, Kelly, if your, if your client has suggestions that they specifically would like to entertain before these developers, then it's incumbent upon your client to make those specific suggestions. And if, I think that benefits me, but if, I agree with John. I mean, as I look at this development, I think, personally, I think it's highly compatible with this area. I told the developers when I met with them, I like the look of this development. I think this is a good location for it. And generally, it's not one that I wanted, that I want to deny. I'm kind of amazed that says, "Well, Kelly, you're saying, well, we need to be a little bit more restrictive." And as, as it boils down to, well, we want, we want them to say what their signs are, and we want them to, what else were you saying? I mean, if I'm clear, you got down to maybe two. And it's signs and something else. Well, then why are we, we could agree to signs right now. We can, but you seem to have, your client seems to have greater concerns about this than those two issues. Because you talked a long time, so there must be more to it. I'm just saying.
And on the signage, you know, we agree with the TE, which is eight feet. You know, we can agree with a square footage that's 150. We certainly respect and appreciate your desire, and we're willing to do that. The only thing I would ask is, and I know it's not Mr. Work, I know it's not him.
I'm not pointing to Kelly.
But could we have a clear direction? Because I believe his client is in attendance today, that this Commission wants the parties to get together to discuss the real issues that are before the planning commission. Because we're willing to do that, and we want to come to a resolution.
And the road is not my issue either, as Mike correctly points out.
My clients are reasonable, and as I've said for the last three weeks, give me something, as is a typical in a negotiation with a PUD. You know, "How about you do this?" Sure. So if we could get that direction so that Mr. Work's client can hear that, we would be happy to take the two weeks.
Well, I'd like that kind of a conversation to occur. Be sensitive to my suggestion about density because of the efforts we put in negotiating Chisholm Creek and the knowledge of the vast number of garden apartments in this general area in Ward Eight already. That was a significant concern we had
Sure.
In 2014 and in years before. Pat?
We've got too many apartments in Ward Eight. And anytime we get a cluster of apartments, we have a problem. Because the problems are caused by the apartments being sold, out of state, to developers who only look for a check.
Right.
And then the second thing I'd like to ask Mr. Work is, how does Topgolf fit in with all the restrictions? Topgolf is part of the
Yes, sir. Development. Topgolf, at the time the PUD was being negotiated, Topgolf had been identified as a user at that location. So it was contemplated, the use, the floor plan, the designs were all included as part of the PUD
But they don't match any of the requirements you asked for.
Pardon me?
They don't match any of the requirements you asked this PUD adhere to.
I'm not sure, I'm understanding your question that
When it was, what in your plan, that none of these, these restrictions you're talking about on this PUD would apply to Topgolf or the hospital?
No, they definitely do apply to Topgolf as well. There were some very specific restrictions that were included in the PUD to accommodate Topgolf, including the netting, the size and height of lighting for Topgolf, those types of things. But the signage and other restrictions, they're, they're equally subject to the restrictions as, under the PUD as any other property.
How many commercial, how many slots did you give to that Topgolf thing in order to develop your residential area?
Well, it'd be based on the, the area that was included in the building for Topgolf would give us the ability to build that many residential units based on a one unit per 500 gross square feet of commercial building, up to the maximum of 1,200. So we do get credit for the Topgolf facility as a commercial use for purposes of that ratio. So that would allow us then to do a number of multifamily residential units and any other commercial building that is built. The object was to make sure that the commercial is happening as the residential is happening so that it's, it's not just the residential.
And all of the restaurants that are contemplated around the lake are part of your proposal?
I'm not sure, I'm understanding
So are restaurants proposed around the lake?
Yes.
And are they going to be included in your calculation?
Yeah, they're included in the PUD. They would be included in those calculations, yes, sir. Any, any commercial or office building would be able to be included in that calculation.
And the hospital was a separate item from Chisholm Creek?
Yeah, the hospital was not part of Chisholm Creek. That, that was separate.
But it doesn't comply with any of the restrictions you put on the PUD?
Correct. The hospital would be covered by whatever zoning applies to the hospital. It was not part of the Chisholm Creek PUD.
And you don't want that same kind of thought to apply to this PUD?
We think it shouldn't be any less than what we're having to comply with. And, and the objective, again, would be the same, is that, to try to meet the objective and concerns that the Commission and the city had when Chisholm Creek was put in place, to make sure that it really was going to be a mixed-use development and not just become another sea of multifamily residential. That was the objective. That was the purpose of those restrictions that were included in the, in the Chisholm Creek PUD, as I understand it.
And you would prefer the 120 or whatever it is, single-family residence opposed to this particular PUD?
Yes.
It's not
Well, our preference would be that it be built out of single-family residences.
And did you include the advanced center located along as well?
Yes, sir. That would be included as well.
David, one thing, just as you're, as you're thinking about this, I noted in some of your uses with respect of your document, you've got outdoor sales in display and outdoor storage. I don't, I don't know how that's appropriate here.
Sure. In fact
And then eating establishment, fast food with drive-thru, I don't know how you're going to work that onto this piece of property. Just, you can think about those.
Sure.
You might revisit some of these uses. I don't want to
We can do that.
Do that from the horseshoe, but I would suggest it certainly. Those three stood out for me as not necessarily in line with what your client's vision of that was. I mean, I get they may want a Starbucks there, but I don't see how we're going to work a drive-thru.
And we could, we could come up with language to allow the Starbucks. I mean, we'd stipulate, we'd take their uses, their restrictions in our PUD.
Two Two weeks?
Those issues came up in my mind, but I didn't want to bring them up. We'll take two weeks?
That works for us.
All right. Motion to continue is to October 27th?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Continue item 16 for two weeks to October 27th. Cast your votes, and it is continued.
Thank you.
Janice didn't vote.
No.
Yeah.
Yeah, Janice is out of the room. Five votes.
Okay. Item 17 is PC 10472 to rezone 15500 Southeast 71st Street from AA to RA.
Hello, my name's Steve Landies with Land Run Engineering, 201 West Ninth, Shawnee, Oklahoma, representing Red River Homes. We're trying to look at this property from, you know, AA back to an RA approach. I am happy to say that we're looking at, you know, 35 to 40 housing units on 60 acres instead of one acre. So I think that's a fit to a little did city better on our property. The piece of property is a heavily wooded piece of parcel in the first place. Would have to be coming off 71st Street in the first place. There happens to be a ridge about 300 feet east of the west line, and the idea is basically to make a primary road off to that side and then bring some cul-de-sacs things down across, down the hill, you know, towards the drainage, which has to be some flood zone areas to the east. We've also kind of looked at, what we'll probably do is to try to extend some outlets, you know, out to both Meridian, or out to Indian Meridian as well to the south to allow that, you know, joint between those two roads over time. We've looked at the surrounding areas, and this area is actually developing quite heavily in more of an RA type of approach. Matter of fact, I've looked adjacent properties and around and within about a two-mile radius, and I think there's approximately 11, 10 to 11 subdivisions out in that area that basically fit that RA approach in the first place. We did actually look at and consider the idea of an RA II for even a little bit less density. The problem is, well, one, up on the north side, there's a little bit of a drainage feature. Our developer is looking at trying to create a couple of big common lots, some ponds, and some amenities to this development over time. And then there's, well, there's a pipeline that happens to run, you know, across it. In order to get a density of what he really needs to make it profitable, you needed somewhere around 35 to 40 lots, 40 being the maximum, I think, that we're going to ever look at to try to make this thing work, as well as by leaving, well, the lots in that size right there would allow us enough common area in the ponds and everything for amenities up within the development. As we develop this out, I think he's looking at homes in the ranges of 200, $200,000 to $300,000 homes, which seems to be pretty average to that area out there, has good access to I-40. Everything else that appears that we've looked at out in this area, it seems to fit. The idea was a French, of course, just to come straight with a zoning application to look at an RA approach, as well as to open up some communications to see if, hate to present both a zoning and a preliminary plat at the same time and find out that there's incompatibilities we need to readjust. So we would like to request the RA zoning under the, kind of the ideas and see if we can, probably in December, if this could be agreed to, present a preliminary plat after we've worked with kind of some adjacent property owners and cities and staff to make sure it fits what everybody would like. Any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Well, we have someone who wants to talk to us, so we'll ask Jerry Bond to approach.
That's Bond, Jerry Bond. Mr. Bond, Mr. Bond may or may not speak. If I think I can say a few things first. I represent Mike McAtee, who's the leader of the protest movement. He couldn't be here today. I think you've read the staff report on this. It's interesting to observe that these kinds of cases are going to be, probably become more frequent with people trying to go out into the country and build dense developments where they don't belong. I want to quote from the staff report. "The proposed RA zoning district would allow densities of one dwelling unit per acre and lot sizes smaller than one acre, depending on the open space provided. The RA district is not supported in rural low-density areas." In this case, the subject area is within the rural low-lit, which does not support lot sizes less than five acres. I mean, this is a ridiculous application. I hope you deny it summarily. Now, I'm willing, if my clients authorize me to, to sit. They haven't closed on this, by the way, so they don't have their necks stuck out quite as much as some other applicants. I'm willing to sit down, if we can have an adult conversation about it and talk about how this area might be developed. But this is so far off the rails, it's barely merits your consideration. I hope you deny it.
Well, this is a- You want to come up, Mr. Bond?
Jerry Bond.
With an S?
Jerry Bond. It's like James Bond.
Give us your name and address, please.
My name is Jerry Bond. I live at 15425 Southeast 71st, which is in Heritage Estates on the west side of the proposed property right there. I won't take much of your time right here, but I do have some thoughts written down that I'd like to go over. First of all, I need to give you a little bit of a history of Heritage Estates. Heritage Estates was completed in 1966, or, excuse me, 1996 with a plat laid out for 50 homes, with all of them being on two and a half acre lots. However, right now, there's only 44 existing homes with one lot that is currently vacant after a tornado destroyed the home in May of 2010, and the owner is waiting to complete medical school before rebuilding. A little bit of the other history, another developer had attempted to rezone the same property in 2005, PC number 9935, had pulled out after the rezoning commission had put in stipulations that needed to be taken care of before rezoning could be approved. The main concern was that with only one entrance exit from 71st Street, had to be completed all the way to Indian Meridian Road, and the developer would be responsible for building a bridge over the Blue Stream, which lies on another property owner's land. Once a developer pulled out of the case, was left with the status of indefinite continuation. Of course, the safety of the 44 residents of Heritage Estates is a primary concern for all of our residents and our children. Heritage Estates has only one road that provides services to the 44 homes, which is a two-way gravel asphalt all-weather road, which was finished in 1996, has only one undivided entrance exit in and out of the community onto Chalk Town Road, which is now currently under construction. I put in a packet, a couple of pictures of the entrance from 71st Street. I'm not sure if it showed up. You know, in a packet, oh, I got a couple of pictures. That goes into the, there's a community there. Of course, Chalk Town Road is the only entrance exit onto I-40 from three miles west to Anderson Road to three miles east to Peabody Road. So with expansion of Chalk Town Road to a four-lane road and being designated as a snow route and additional traffic on 71st Street, it all should require a light signal at the intersection of 71st and Chalk Town Road, which should be paid for by the builder. It is my understanding that after talking to the OKC Fire Marshal's Office and people within the OKC subdivision zoning commission, they generally don't like more than 30 homes per single entrance exit. But as of right now, the developer hasn't submitted a final plat of his proposed subdivision, so until we see that, we can't offer a final opinion. You know, I know he said he'd like to have 30 to 40 of them. We were grandfathered in because our addition was built before the rule went into effect. Also, the closest fire department is three miles away with no fire hydrants in our community. With all the homes in Heritage Estates being on a water well septic, we have common, we have concerns about the water table that has already been dropping over the last several years, and additional homes would further draw from our only water source since city water or sewage isn't available. With the addition of the two truck stops with restaurants at I-40 and Chalk Town Road, they have already put a burden on our fragile water table. And I understand that once I-40 and Chalk Town Road are completed, that there are more plans for an industrial park on the south side of I-40 and a small strip mall on the north side of I-40. Next, we have concerns about stormwater runoff and any pollution that may be caused by the FEMA-designated wetlands on the east side of the proposed rezoning property. Also, any pollutions to the wetlands due to septic systems or over-fertilization and herbicides used on individual yards that would run off into the FEMA Blue Line stream and impact wildlife or property owners downstream and further damage to the green belt that now exists. As far as I know, there's been no environmental impact studies or engineering reports that would show how this new residential addition would impact the environment. We also have concerns that may be caused of heavy construction equipment that would be needed to clear and construct new housing, that there would be major damage to 71st Street and the city now maintains, and we suggest that the builder should be liable to repairs after completion of any houses that may be built. I'll close with this. Even if 71st Street were opened up and extended east and a bridge built over the Blue Line Stream and extended to Indian Meridian Road, common sense would tell you, since there is no on-off ramp on I-40 from Indian Meridian, that 95% of the traffic in and out of the new addition would still travel through the Heritage Estates on 71st Street. That's all I have. If anybody's got any questions.
If we were to approve this, we would require a comp plan amendment. Just as a point of information.
I move denial. I mean, you want to continue it?
I'd really rather continue it if we have something or even look at other options.
I mean, he's going to have to come back with a whole new application. I mean, I don't, I don't know how this works.
We object. I don't want to continue it. I don't want it denied. And the reason is, if they're serious about it, they can come see us with a PUD. We'll talk to them.
There's a motion and a second to deny on the floor.
To deny it, I hope.
Yeah.
Sir?
I think it's probably best. I don't know what you'd do if you continued.
Well, first one, okay, we originally actually presented to the city, I think I talked with Lance about doing this as a PUD. And basically, because of the type of area and what we're looking at, it was more appropriate, in his opinion, to go towards straight zoning. So that was one of the reasons we directed this more towards a straight zoning approach. Other than that, like you said, the one thing I was looking at, we could actually try to come back and look at a PUD, but that was another thing we were looking at is, I mean, it appears from the opposition's standpoint, the idea is towards no development whatsoever, but-
No, I don't think I'm saying that, and certainly the commission's not saying that. I think what we're saying is, the development that you proposed is not compatible with the surrounding area. So if you want to consider, and that's what Mr. Grove's objection is, that it's not compatible with the area. And so you've got AA, you've got RA, and so to meet the rural-
The RA.
The RL, right? It's got to be five. So if you're willing to consider that, that's fine.
No, I mean, currently, it is AA. So we actually meet that requirement as of right now. We could develop it out in five-acre parcels. What we're looking at's a little bit more density than a five-acre parcel.
Right, and we're telling you, we're not going to do that.
What they're saying is that in order to ask to develop it at a greater density than five acres, you would have to ask to amend the comprehensive plan to that rural medium intensity use. So they would have to have this discussion about whether or not it was appropriate to redo the comp plan designation so that you could seek a PUD or a straight zoning to RA. But right now, it would not be in conformance with the comprehensive plan's rural low designation.
Okay, a little confused on that aspect. I'd just like to get some clarification, because adjacent to us is actually RA. And then if you're looking south of I-40, and you look north, there's about 11 within a mile and a half to two-mile radius of this area that are all RA districts. In fact, if you look just on the very top of the aerial-
If you look at the comprehensive plan map, there is a rural medium intensity designation just to the west of this site. But this site is actually in the rural low-intensity area. So the rural medium intensity is appropriate because of those RA developments that are to the west. But this is on the edge where AA zoning existed and lower-intensity development happened in a rural low-intensity area. So you would, in essence, be expanding the rural medium-intensity development further to the east, which would require an amendment to the comp plan.
Okay.
Yeah. And considerable thought went into where these boundaries were determined to be in the first place, just so you're aware. Okay, gentlemen and lady, we have a motion and a second to deny item 17. Before us, cast your votes. And it is denied.
Mr. Chairman, I have some breaking news. Bob Dylan won the Nobel Prize for literature. Just thought you'd like to know.
Thanks. I assume it was for his early work, but that's just me.
The last item on the agenda is just to introduce and set for public hearing the adoption of the proposed capital improvement plan for fiscal year 2017 through 2021.
So that's just, we're fires a motion to introduce and set.
I move it to be set for public hearing on October 27th.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Item 18 is approved to be set for public hearing on October 27th. And now we're to the end of our agenda. Planning Commission members, anything?
I just wanted to, I wanted to commend the staff for the planning session that we had with Traffic Commissioner Day. Really helpful, very well-run presentation, really was an indication of a lot of really good, hard work that had been done and, you know, well-thought-through, so.
And it creates some optimism that there may be some tools that we'll be able to employ going forward that would help us with both subdivision design and traffic calming. And I think those are both worthy goals.
That came up.
Compliments to the staff again for that work.
And thank you all for prompting that. Thank you all for asking for that, and we're happy to accommodate any time. And this really was a very collaborative process even between departments, not just between commissions, but Public Works and Planning work hand-in-hand, getting all the time. This was a really good opportunity for all of us to talk about the initiatives we have in place, the goals that we have in mind for future development, and how we address existing development. So I felt it was very beneficial.
I think we got a session-
Similar session with the city council.
You won't know which chair to sit in.
I know exactly which chair to sit in.
I think Eric said he would distribute the slideshow to all the commissioners. It would be really helpful to, well, and informative, because it would show what direction is going on, and it's a really, really good direction. Well, it just keeps some of those things front and center in our thought processes as we go forward to have that to refer to, I think. So that would be helpful. Planning Department, Municipal Council, Development Services. Eric to be heard, oh, citizens to be heard. No, no, never mind, never mind. And we are adjourned at 4:03. Jinx.